Quick one, and Catherine Ingram, please, come forward. Do you ladies know each other, by the way?
We do.
Oh, there it is.
We've actually met through a thing.
Okay, well then, that's, that solves the problem.
There's conversation after.
And you ladies know our immediate problem?
Yes.
You're up the creek. And we have a town election on Monday, and a state election on, whatever?
April 30th.
April 30th. And we have, someone I know has been told, I've been told, is familiar with the machines, and someone else is familiar with something else. And if you ladies are interested, does anybody have any questions on here? Someone's already been in there, right?
Yes, I was today.
Okay.
Yeah, she pushed the panic button.
Yes, I did. I made myself.
Oh, you really hit that panic. It worked.
I tried to move it off the counter, I didn't know what it was. I found out.
What?
Which one's camera?
So, what are your names, I'm sorry?
I'm Sandy Whitland.
And I'm Catherine Ingram.
And where are you all two from?
I'm from Chesterfield.
And you're from?
And I live in South Hampton, but I'm the appointed town clerk in Long Meadow.
And how do you feel, how are we gonna get around this Monday's election? You guys talked about it.
I just talked briefly. I actually said you have a special town meeting going on, so I didn't realize it was an election. But I did tell her I'm available to help her out if she needs some help. She's not familiar with the machines.
Well, the girls, yeah, the girls are pretty sharp, the body and all those.
Yeah. But there's things ahead of time, like there's, you have to test those machines to make sure that they're running properly.
You have to test them, like, this Thursday?
Which probably has not been done. I usually do it about Thursday.
And you have to verify that with the state?
Uh, you do have to let them know that you did test the machines, so.
And you spoke to Eileen today?
I did, yeah.
Did she say she tested and verified the machines yet?
She said she usually tested hers, if the election started, you know, she would test it in the morning.
Okay. So it runs noon to eight, I think the polls go from noon to eight.
Right.
So how are we gonna handle that?
Well, I work full-time in Long Meadow, so I could actually be available to her via phone, and I could come in, you know, after five o'clock and help her out at the end of the night. You know, machines closed down, machine, and do the results.
Well, do you think you can come in on Sunday and quickly look at the machine and make sure it's all set to go?
Yeah, you know, I typically test my machine, you know, at least four days before. Because if I have a problem with the card, I'm doing it the morning of, you wouldn't be able to get a replacement card, so that would make me a little nervous about doing it that morning.
I don't think we have a problem if you want to test it on Thursday.
You know, so, I mean, I do work, like I said, full-time, so I could come in maybe Friday afternoon, I don't know what hours, you know, you're gonna be available.
This building isn't open on Fridays, right?
It is, Reggie's here.
I'll be here.
You're here.
You're here till then.
It varies. So you'll just let me know.
It's not officially open, but once you're in the building here, you can get out.
Yeah. What about Thursday? I do have a meeting in Wellesley Thursday morning, and I won't be going back to work afterward. So I'll probably be there at least a couple hours, so maybe around, like, three-ish, I could come in and help you with that. That'll help you.
That'd be nice.
Would that work for you ladies? Would that work?
Yeah.
And then Reggie's here, so.
Okay.
There's another issue, you have a handicap machine.
Yes.
That is laconic, and that has to be checked out, too.
Yes.
So there's two pieces of progress.
That one usually we do check.
That one, I know how that works.
I know it has a little bit of a personality.
I think they all do.
Who sets up for the election?
The highway department sets up for it under, you know.
Yeah, their direction.
Their direction.
And we're using this room again?
No, we'll use that one.
Oh, we're using.
But Bunny knows how to do this, so.
Who sets up the election?
It's usually the girls from the registrars.
Highway department set up the election.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it's more like having machines and everything.
And we'll do that Thursday, if it's all right with you.
But I think Reggie should talk to you all about who the members are of the registrars that actually run the election. And Bunny's one, who's been doing it for years and years, and she'll get you contact. And maybe she should be here on Thursday to meet you all.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, to all get together. If you could talk to Bunny tomorrow, get them done here Thursday at three o'clock. Get all the girls so they know the teams and everything will run.
Okay.
The other thing I have is, we'll set that up Thursday, and we're breaking down Tuesday morning. But there's always a glitch. Does council and aging have activities? We need to coordinate this activity with them, and it needs to be, because they have activities, so it's very crucial that we can work this out in a timeframe. Because we're very, it's very cumbersome, the stuff that we put in there.
Right. So you, you.
They're actually here.
They already knew that we were gonna be setting up, but they thought they'd be setting up on.
Friday.
On Monday morning.
Oh, really?
But.
I'll talk to Jen.
Okay.
She's here.
Well, wait a minute, the polls open for this election at 12?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That can be done, too, if necessary.
Okay.
But it's up to you.
Yeah, we just need a space to run the machine, to do the task. I don't need everything set up to do that, we just need that table.
Where are the machines? Is it there in here? So in the daytime, this is open?
Yes.
Yes.
So Catherine, you're gonna call in on Thursday?
I can come in, I can come in. I have a meeting, like I said, at 10:00 a.m. in Wellesley on Thursday morning, so I plan to be back, you know, the meeting should be less than two hours, so it's about an hour and a half.
And have we discussed compensation for you ladies?
No.
Oh, so the gorilla in the room. The 800-pound gorilla.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really honestly, you know, I'm really concerned, I just wanna help out, you know, a couple times, seriously. I can imagine being out and not having someone run my office, so, yeah.
Not just one, two.
Yeah. Having both of them out, right.
Did we talk, well, currently, I did check into it, Ruth is the assistant, I believe she makes $15.90 currently. And, I mean, this is a fill-in position. Is that something you can work with?
It certainly is for me.
How about you? You're not worried about it?
Like I said, I'm not really too concerned.
If it's not a problem, then we can, I think that's.
So establish compensation at $15.90.
$15.90.
All right, so.
You know, you take care of your own time cards and minimum.
Reggie will help you with that, right, the time.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sure there won't be a lot of vacation.
No. Darn.
All right, so do we wanna make a motion to appoint the two ladies as?
I do, but I have a question, reading through the letters from them.
Joe Fair.
It says they need to be sworn in. Who swears them in? The chief elector?
Moderator or the chemist, explorers, man?
I've already asked him.
Get him.
I've already asked him.
Oh, okay.
He's upstairs, he's in finance.
Okay, so, I figure we can do that today, if she's there.
As soon as he's done, it'd be great. Don't you agree, them sworn in?
Yeah, let's get it done. Let's take a motion to appoint both of them as, as assistant. What would they be?
They would be acting clerks.
Acting co-town clerks?
Correct.
At a rate of $15.90 an hour.
Um, I can give you my, you run into any difficulties, or you need manpower to move stuff around early in the day, I'll give you my cellphone, and you can get ahold of me.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies, congratulations, I think this is the first time.
I wanna thank you for filling in.
Appreciate it.
Eileen's home.
Oh, great.
She came home today, and Ruth will come home tomorrow.
No kidding?
Yeah, it was supposed to be reversed, but different doctors do different things.
Well, that's pretty cool.
That's good. Do you have any idea how long they'll be out, or, you know?
I don't think we should push it.
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
But they're very bubbly and happy.
They both were when I spoke with them today.
You know, and it's amazing what they went through, and, you know, it's marvel science.
I do wanna just mention to you that for the April 30th election, I have to run my town election.
Yes, you do.
She has to be present for hers.
Right.
So hoping that one of the.
I can't comment on Eileen, but the way she told me, she wasn't staying home much.
And that's about six weeks away right now, so.
Well, on the other side of the coin is, if you ladies could get us set up for that election, and we had to put in somebody just to be temporary.
There you go. Right. As long as you have a strong warden and clerk, who could do.
But I mean, as long as we can get, we gotta get through Monday, and then if we get to April, if you.
We got the caucus, too.
Yeah.
Oh, crap.
When is that?
March 28th. Well, if one of you two could be available for that town.
Yeah, Eileen usually.
Yeah, she usually runs the town caucus.
Now, you do caucus? I'm not familiar with that at all.
Me neither.
Oh, it's not.
I say it's not different.
No, you just point, you grab somebody out of the audience and point them to be the clerk.
You kinda have to do that, right?
Yep.
From what Eileen was telling me, that.
Robert, we need you as town moderators, swearing two co-clerks to fill in for Eileen and Ruth while they're.
Can I stand?
Recovering, to cover the town election on Monday. And others.
I sworn in Eileen, but it's been right after I was sworn in, so I could use the brood, so I.
Do you want me to tell you? I've done it a few times.
Safety.
I'll raise my right hand.
Open, okay.
She's on, sir.
She's on, sir.
To faithfully perform.
To faithfully perform.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
For which you're affiliated.
To which you're affiliated.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Robert. You're God's.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
And your rewards will be in other places other than here.
Thank you, Robert.
I'll be in tomorrow, but I forgot to have a doctor.
Fortuitous that you were here tonight, Robert.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
No more than you're.
All right.
All right. I think we've kinda lost track of where we're interviewing. We're interviewing. Mr. Henning.
That's it.
Step forward, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, Veterans Officer. And Mr. Henning is.
Step forward.
How are you, evening, sir? Mr. Henning's credentials start on page five of 54.
Five?
You take a minute, give the board a minute to familiarize themselves.
This is on the page.
You are?
What did I do? Five.
Can I say five of 54?
Five.
Mr. Henning, you do HVAC?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I'm just, the top of the page is cut off. I was just.
Oh. Well, if you need a hard copy, I have one.
No, we should, well, I don't know if somebody needs it.
Also have certification of the position.
Certification of what?
Veteran service officer. Ready?
You got certified since?
Yes.
HVAC, yeah.
I'm actually my brother's filter.
Ventilation air conditioner.
Oh, yeah.
Between college and med school.
Oh.
Just glad I hadn't have to work on a roof like that in August.
For young people.
It is for young people. Putting a compressor on a flat roof in August.
Okay. Anyone with questions for Mr. Henning?
What attracted you to this work?
Well, administrative work is kind of, you know, we've worked with three corporations, so I'm able to do administrative work on veterans, so, I like assisting veterans, you know, helping them out, and, you know, it's something I wanna do to get back, so it's been working out good. As you guys, if you don't know, your books can be audited. I did online audit audit every individual of all four towns for the last year.
So are you working for all four towns now? You working for four towns now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, included, so. So I balanced the books for the last year. I'm not an accountant, but.
No, but it's basic business.
Part of the spreadsheet responsibility.
Did the books balance?
Uh, it took some doing. Took a few nights.
Also, you have to communicate with the state and federal side of this, to get an endorsement.
Yes, yes.
And is that more difficult, or what you expected?
Actually, it's been quite good, you know, through email or phone calls. They've been very receptive of any questions and responsive, and, you know, it's just a matter of getting up to speed on the software business, which is their platform for doing any reporting and accountability of each individual, and at a town level, so, you know, it's, you have to keep on month by month.
Have you any difficulty going to homes to deal with the?
Not at all, I've added two veterans to your warrant over the last couple months, and that's what I've done. I prefer to do.
Mm-hmm.
Some aren't as receptive, some are handicapped, go to hospitals quite frequently, so, you know, we work something out. But no, it looks up fine.
So how many veterans are we talking about now in South Hampton?
You have eight.
You have eight?
Eight that are active.
Eight, I didn't hear that, eight?
Eight that are active.
Active, oh, okay, eight receiving benefits.
Right.
Obviously, we've got more veterans than that in town.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Another thing I need to reach out to is, is I'd like to sit down with all of them and get their backgrounds, and see what we can do, see if they qualify for medical assistance or whatever. You know, the more, the more work that is done along those lines, the more money that gets filtered through the community from Boston, so it adds to your, you know, to your community. So, you know.
Mr. Henning's been functioning as our veterans' agent since?
October.
October, color? So, five months or so? Six months?
So you know the job?
I do. I do, I've been in several meetings, and, you know, I work together with veteran service officers, either in Westfield or North Hampton, and keep in touch with the gentleman in Huntington. So, yeah, it's worked out good.
Have you, I mean, this is for my own, is there anything you've come across that is, you haven't been able to deal with as far as services for these vets?
No, you know, it's like anything else, if I do an audit of somebody's home or commercial building for HVAC, you gotta do the groundwork, and that goes without saying, individual, you start a case from the bottom up, you know, you gotta collect all the documents, ask the questions, record it, get it in the system, do the calculations, you know, you have to do it. So, you know, that's been my discipline regardless of what I do, you know, and it works out. It all comes to the surface. You know, if they don't have the document, you know, getting people to send their documents in sometimes is, is a difficult proposition, they don't have a fax machine, a lot of senior citizens don't work on computers, if we can get them to a library, it's not, oh, yeah, you know. Could use a second phone line hookup, so to keep the fax machine on constantly. I know I had it on for, for a couple days overnight, and everyone was waiting someone's documents, and someone couldn't leave a message, and they got through the COA, but, you know, sort of the duplicit responsibility of communicating, be able to give mail, faxes, emails, and, you know, all of those things going at the same time, so they have a free round. Very important for them, you know, if they lose, especially if they're totally dependent on veterans' assistance, that, you know, they can't get ahold of us, they feel lost, a little lost, yeah. Give a little anxious.
Anything else? Well, you should know, we're conducting further interviews, and we have not yet, we had some interviews several weeks ago, we had a couple last week, and we've had two more tonight, and we'll be making our decision sometime in the near future.
All right, very good. Well, the house is in order.
All right.
So whoever steps in will, you know, be able to segue. Regardless, I enjoy doing it, I will continue to enjoy doing it, and, you know, if you choose to appoint me for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thanks.
And Mr. Plaket. Information starts on page? No, on page 16. 16? My finger isn't walking through the pages quicker there, it's 16. Mr. Plaket, welcome.
Thank you.
I just have to, I talked to you on your street maybe about six months ago.
Yes, sir.
You got deployed right after I talked to you?
Not, not.
Is this something I said?
That's right, I just got back two weeks ago.
Yep. From?
No, I was in Kuwait, I was in the United Arab Emirates, and in Qatar. Spent most of my time in Kuwait.
You've just been back two weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
That's still away from home.
Thank you.
A long way from West Springfield.
I'm about 90% back.
Long, no, thank you for your service, too.
Well, what's more beautiful here.
It'll be much prettier in a few weeks when the rain starts coming. You traded the sand for the snow.
That's okay.
So why do you wanna be agent?
Well, I am currently active in the military, as you know. I have another, at least eight years to retirement, and being in the military, I've, there's a lot of questions, a lot of the information does not get pushed toward the active military people, I'm sure it doesn't get pushed toward the retirees or the disabled veterans that didn't get a chance to put their 20 years in. And I've been more or less the go-to guy at the reserve base I work at. I, my full-time job, you know, I deal with a lot of regulations, and, so I'm always kinda looking up regs and reading and the rules and principles about things, so, there's, there's so much to know, and not everybody has a good hand on it, so I'd like to help out the retirees, the disabled veterans, and active duty personnel by just distributing the information and seeing who's eligible for what.
I think you might be.
And to learn, also, there's so much to learn.
He might be the only one that's unactive.
Correct.
That I can remember, the other, everybody's been retired.
Correct.
Or had just retired.
Or just retired.
Where'd you go to high school?
High school?
Yeah.
Oh, in Chickaby.
Okay. Most people are born in Chickaby, raised in Chickaby, never leave Chickaby. How'd you get up?
Well, my, I don't know, to me, that's an easy question. My wife's from West Hampton, and most of her relatives are in South Hampton, West Hampton.
Did she go to regional?
She introduced me, she's there, my wife didn't.
Yeah.
How old is she?
She's 41.
Does she know Jimmy Allen, or Sarah, or Johanna Bellabow, by any chance?
Those names don't ring a bell for me, she and I, but my wife's name is Tammy Beebe, her maiden name is Beebe.
Beebe, okay. My stepdaughter's not there, but that's okay.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's live. Live TV.
With his wife, it's all a hill.
The Hapwors, does she know the Hapwors at all?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
Question I have is, I know your regular job is making pipe at night, and I know you're supervisor there. How long will you be activated, are you activated for a year, two years, or?
Well, no, I, well, I've been in the military for 12 years, and this was, I did one brief deployment back a number of years, it was only 30 days.
Okay.
This deployment was six months, and then I'll be on leave for the rest of this month.
Okay, but are you reserves or National Guard?
I'm reserved.
Okay.
I've worked at the National, I've done both, which is good. I've been in Air National Guard for six years, and I've been recently on that West Oakland Air Force Reserve.
Mm-hmm.
So my full-time job is making pipe, I'm the quality assurance manager at the ADS manufacturing facility in Lala, and we sell pipe to many city municipalities and towns, and we sell pipe to the state. So I deal with state officials all the time. We get audited by Mass Highway and New York State, Connecticut do a few, they drop in anytime. Even the Canadian Highway Department, they drop in, so, you know, that's where I need, that's where I need to know about our regulations in respect to what we manufacture and be prepared. I travel around the country, I might go eight to 10 times a year to audit different branches of our companies, if we were to turn audits.
Do you, how would you fit us in? I mean, you have your reserve.
Oh, notice.
And your regular job, how would you fit us in to address our vets?
Well, that, I mean, that was, eventually, that'd be one of my questions, as far as when you would require me here. I know the number of hours at a minimum was stated in the position online.
Reggie probably can give you a quick synopsis of what's expected, you know? He's not regimented in any hours.
I was thinking an evening or two during the week, or maybe one evening during the week, and an afternoon on the weekend. And depending on, the veterans, to me are, any veteran is a customer, so we kinda have to work something out.
What are the minimum hours?
I have to be flexible.
Eight, so, basically a day.
Eight a month, or eight a week?
Eight a week.
Eight a week.
Two half-days or something?
That's what I was thinking, two half-days, or, it just all depends what's going on. I mean, if there's a holiday that week.
You know, there's gonna be some.
Or ceremonies, I might do 10 or 12 hours that one day.
Right.
It just depends.
There might be some weeks where you're saying, well, I'm not doing eight, I'm doing 10 or 12, and there'll be other weeks that, you know, they'll have to average them out, that's, I think that we look at it, you know, we're not gonna abuse you, or whoever's in that position, but we, you know, you keep it on schedule and address the needs, and I think our flexible schedule will work, you know?
I'm used to that, and not only being in the military, and, you know, they throw me wherever as far as hours, and, well, my full-time job, I'm salaried, so I work, I work numerous hours over 40 many times, I don't get paid any extra.
Eight a week.
Eight a week.
Two half-days or something.
That's what I was thinking, two half-days or, it, it just all depends what's going on. I mean, if there's a holiday that week-
You know, there's gonna be some-
-or ceremonies or ceremonies, I might, I might do ten or twelve hours that one day.
Right.
It just depends.
There might be some weeks where you're, you're saying, "Well, I'm not doing eight, I'm doing ten or twelve." And there'll be other weeks that, you know, they'll have to average them out. That's, I think that we look at it. You know, um, we're, we're not gonna abuse you or whoever's in that position. But we, you know, we, you keep your own schedule and address the needs and, uh, I think our flexible schedule will work, you know?
I'm used to that. I mean, not only being in the military and, you know, they throw me wherever as far as hours and, well, my full-time job on salary, so I work, I work numerous hours over forty many times. I don't get paid any extra. I work, I'm a trainer also, so I work with our second and third shifts. So, I'll swing my shift all the time. And then just audits are definitely-
It sounds like you really want to do this because you want to give back to vets and-
I want to give back to vets. I want to learn and I know that I'd be effective-
Benefits in finding the programs that would be a good match? It sounds like you have, you've got your full-time job.
And I guess my only concern is you are somewhat of a, you are a business executive. You are working more than forty hours and we're gonna throw another eight hours on top of a fifty-hour schedule.
But it's eight, eight average, we're saying, so-
No, no, I'm just saying, but if you take the average, it's eight hours a week, you're adding another day's work and you have children, I believe.
Yes, sir. I have three children.
Yes.
And I'm in the Air Force Reserve.
And, and you're in the Air Force Reserve, which is another part-time job and I'm not, I, I'm liking your credentials and everything, but I'm concerned for the-
But he loses less than a mile for the town hall.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm high-energy. I mean, there was about three years ago, I was in the Air Force Reserve, uh, my full-time job at ADS. I cut lawns on the side and I worked on divo.
Saying, you've said enough.
Um, I've been at my, my house for three years.
How many children do you have?
Three. I live on Whispering Mountain Lane and, and if I took in my backyard and showed you what I did in one season, you wouldn't believe me.
I think he could probably address eight vets.
Huh?
Seems like he could address the needs of eight vets at the moment.
I know his mother-in-law, so like-
You know, I, I do like the idea that he was pretty persistent about, uh, being part of this interview and asking us, uh, to hold it open until he got back from his assignments. And I did like that. Uh, it meant that he had a commitment. He wanted something, uh, at the town in this area. And, uh, I think that was a, um, thing that, uh, made us, or made me say, given the extension, we'll wait as long as it takes for him to come back into being.
I have my college degree. I, I was going to night school too. I just finished that last year. So, I graduated with high honors and up with a business degree.
From what?
Loyd Community College.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Um, any further questions?
Nope.
Um, to, we'll suspend and decide how we're gonna decide, I guess.
That's good. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for giving me in.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you're, so you're, Sean Feely, your, your wife will remember Sean and Paul.
Oh, yes. Okay, they were-
They went Paul and he went to school together. Paul was at my house all the time.
I'll have to ask her. My mother-in-law knows, I think she's-
Everybody.
-the people in Southampton-
Yes.
That are under the age of forty.
Yes.
Ma'am?
Sir, thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
I, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy tour. At least, that's the least thing we can do for you.
Uh, but the, the Mass General One Fifteen, I read, read it in its entirety. I don't think any agents know everything, but there's, there's a lot to learn, so.
But there's help. There's a lot of help out there.
Well, that Jim Borelli's in West Springfield. He's got tons of experience I spoke with him and then Gerald, um, Valley at the Soldier's Home and Kim in Chickadee. So, there's all kinds of people and I'm sure we meet. I'm sure there's a-
Oh, there's associations.
So, looking forward to it. I, you know, if I have the opportunity, I'm sure I'd do a good job for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, let's see, we have payroll warrant somewhere.
Right here. Okay, I'll leave this off if I could. Let's see, payroll. Close up a little bit.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, um, payroll-
Okay, all right.
Number P thirteen dash thirty-seven for the total amount of two hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine and eighty-eight cents.
Some moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Isn't there two other ones?
And then we have another couple of, a couple more. P thirteen thirty-seven A D. What is that? A D?
Add. They added it.
Added it, additional. Or is that advanced, advanced?
Sorry, advanced, yep, sorry. The other one's added.
Thirty-seven A D for the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and one dollars and ten cents.
That's Mr., it's Mr. Hyde's vacation money, I believe.
Oh, yes.
Uh, approved, I guess. So, moved?
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
And the last one is P thirteen thirty-seven late.
So, moved?
All in, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. And that's for twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Running down our thing. We did the appointment, Mr. Town Clerk. We have a caucus warrant to sign somewhere. Do I have it?
You might have it.
Is it caucus?
I have it. No, I don't have it.
I didn't see it.
No, I don't have it.
It's on the legal files.
Oh, here it is. You took it.
You have it, brother.
I took it. We have a town, to the constables, name in the Commonwealth. You are here directed, hereby directed to notify the warning inhabitants of the town of Southampton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the new town hall, College Highway, at seven o'clock Thursday, March twenty-eighth for the following purpose. To elect the chairman to serve for the, at the caucus, to elect the clerk to record the minutes of the caucus and to nominate candidates. Does anybody need me to read all the offices?
No.
The polls will remain open until nine P M. Do I have a motion to sign the warrant?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes out.
You gonna go or just still hang with it?
That's the day before I leave on vacation.
Where you going?
Going on cruise.
Really?
Retiring in October sometime unless there's no good news.
Those are three warrants?
Yes, yes, those and this.
Oh.
I'll trade you.
I don't even hear. Well, you don't know.
Interesting. Okay. Uh, so we did the P V, P V P C agreement. P V, town, we did that. License renewal for Sblackworth Whiner, we're still researching. Um, Charlie was here. We have a signature from the chair for land grant contract is requested by Mr. McDonald. Saw that somewhere.
Did he leave already?
He was here earlier.
Did he have, did he have any comments?
I saw that, but where'd it go? Oh, here. This is most be-
This is the land grant that we got from the state for that vote.
For what?
For the vote that we took.
Huh?
That was the land grant that, that we had to vote on.
Yeah, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. In low, in state local acquisitions for natural diversity and land grant program assistance. And it's just going to the, I am pleased to officially confirm that Southampton Greenway project has been selected by the executive office.
Great.
Probably not using CoCot at all. Does CoCot know what we're doing?
No, no. CoCot came in with a check, I don't know if you heard one night, and presented it to us.
Okay.
For that. This is, I think around the time, that's a December letter, am I right? The date of December? And it's just, we're just ratifying what they want.
Okay.
So, we need to, I take motion to sign this?
So moved?
Second? All in favor?
Do you want to send a letter of thanks to Peter for any helping man-
Yeah, I think we should. Reggie, do you know where they want me to sign?
Um, the, the standard contract form, which is-
Is that the state town law contract?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I see everybody else's signature, but I don't-
It's on the bottom. No, we already signed it.
Contact here.
Listen, changing the contract form.
It says contractor.
Arthur, register your contract. You are the contractor.
Oh, we are the contractor?
Yeah.
All right.
Week. There's a lot of weeks. One, two, three, four, five weeks.
So, I make a motion to send a letter of thanks to Peter CoCot for his assistance?
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Reggie, can you draft that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reggie, can I rely on you to fill in my title and everything?
Chief Poopma?
Yeah. Where my-
Put this here.
That we're gonna redraft. Um, so we sit here that calendar upcoming events, mark, what's the date of the town election? Put it out on the-
The special town election.
Special town election is-
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, so we'd like to encourage everyone to come out and vote. Polls are open from noon till eight, March eighteenth. And that's issue is just to vote on the roof for the Norris School so that we can hopefully get fifty-five percent reimbursement. Anyone wish to add anything to that? The twelfth, uh, that's tonight. The nineteenth will be the meeting after that. I don't know that we have any agenda items yet for that night, do we? We do?
Nineteenth, I, I hope to be away on the nineteenth.
All right, so Ann is a, probably not.
It's not fully. I can move it around. We have the public safety committee meeting with you on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And-
Do you mind missing that?
Public safety?
Yeah. You can miss that? Are you saying yes? Oh, okay. Do we have anything else on the agenda yet?
That's it so far.
All right. And then the twenty-sixth? And then you have the town caucus, which is the twenty-eighth, right?
Right.
Twenty-eighth?
March twenty.
And then March fourteenth, the master plan has a public information session, which is Thursday night. And I am a member of that committee and I probably can't be there due to, with the death. Have to go to a wake.
I'll try to be there. Is that gonna be televised?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
What time is that? I have an open house till six in Springfield, so-
It's right there, seven P M.
So.
But you can give comments at any time here.
All right, and then here's a repeat. March twenty-eighth is, uh, the town, special town election. And then we have the Tishman contract, which Ed has a report on.
Yeah, I talked to them on this phone conference call. And, um, the original contract was for the first phase. I think we, the schematic phase of it. And now that we approved, um, the, uh, full contract, these additional fees come in to supervise the construction of this contract. Um, um, they have been-
Is this the same over the original?
Well, the original thirteen thousand dollars was to take care of everything before, um, getting all the information together to submit to the Department of Ed to get the, to get the grant. Once the grant was established, this other, these other fees were part of that grant. This is not new money. It's, it's already embedded in there, as they say. Um, I had no control of that. They made that up. They dealt with that. Uh, I understand what they came with it. Uh, when we did this building here, we were required to have a management group for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And this was like two point three million dollars. And this one here is almost one point eight and they're asking for seventy-eight thousand. This is a thing that's required by the state when you're using their money.
Can't get away from it, but it seems like a waste of money, but it, I mean, the best, we're not, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be Clerk of the Works up there, is there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we are gonna have a Clerk of the Work? Oh, that's, that's the guy you knew we wanted.
Well, yeah. Um, that brings up another subject. And the other subject is, through the course of this meeting, it was talked about at the very end of it, excuse me, um, a building committee. On the town side. Um, at first, I thought, you know, we could handle it, but we only meet once a week. My suggestion is, I was involved with that committee and Mike was involved with that committee to build that school. We are familiar with change orders and discussions. And if the two of us can agree that this is all right to bring to this board, I would recommend that the two of us have the subcommittee of the board to be the committee, this building committee for the roof.
Will you stick around for a while?
Oh, I've got one more year.
This building, this, this roof is gonna be done till September, Dave.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I've got one more year. No.
I thought you left this year, okay.
This roof is gonna be done by September.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
So, I move to have, um, Ed and Mike be a, for a sub, building subcommittee.
And let me just reiterate that that, we would look at it, approve the change orders, but the actual approval will come to the five-member board.
Can I be part of that? Just wait and learn about it. I, I just-
I don't care, but we can't have three, but-
Oh, forget that. I just wanted to, because, because I think if Mike's-
Well, then we'd have to dispose that meeting.
I just want to know about it, that's all. I mean, if you-
I have some on the panel still. I'd like to know. But I, I do think we should meet strictly for that and-
Right, but we just, we'd have to post a meeting.
We post a meeting.
And it wouldn't be, and it wouldn't be a bad, bad idea to have someone starting to pick up.
Right, I agree with you. And, uh-
Reggie, all right, so I-
But I'd like to do them early in the morning.
Yeah, I like to, uh-
I'll, I'll change my, my schedule.
No, no. It'll only be like one or twice a month.
Yeah, that's all.
Well, usually what I do is hit Ed's office at eight o'clock in the morning.
As long as we post it and, you know, it's an open meeting.
I gotta be to Springfield for nine most days.
Probably my third or fourth patient by then, but that's okay.
I, I've thought about my second or third plane by then, but-
But I think this would go a long way to expedite holding things up and, and getting answers.
Right.
So, I move to have the three of you on the subcommittee.
Well, we'll just, we'll just, we will be the subcommittee, the three of us, and you'll have to just try and post that meeting whenever you hear us talk about it. All right.
Well, I'd also recommend that all that stuff comes into the selectman's office through Reggie. So, when we know it, we can plan that meeting and she can help organize that.
Do you have a second?
I don't know how we're gonna do that. We're-
Second.
All right, I guess we can vote ourselves onto the committee, I suppose. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, but what about the Tishman contract? So, we're gonna sign it?
I, I would recommend signing it.
Does someone want to make a motion?
I will do.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, Reggie, again, would you fill in the titles and the dates and everything on that? And then, um, do we need to discuss FY fourteen budgets more than we did with the school committee?
I mean, and, and I don't know what we're gonna be with money.
No, we don't know.
I mean, um, I know Reggie's involved with collecting the revenue side and I don't know if there's really much at this point you can tell us.
Not much yet. I, I plan to have it by Friday. I'll send everything out to you.
I mean, I think it'd be nice if we, you know, I mean, you know, last year we had a little bit of a tistle with the free cash, right? Trying to get that and it was going back and forth. I think we need to try to get that early. I think we know what our, our two and a half percent is. That's based on what we have this year plus two hundred percent. And our new growth, we should be trying to see what's going on. And I think, and not to blame the assessors for anything in this, but people have billing contracts out there, like the billing inspector and that. They know this stuff is coming in. They need to get it into us so she can make an evaluation.
I was just gonna say, do we know how many building permits were issued this year? Any idea?
I don't, I don't have that, but what Rich has stated was there's two subdivisions coming in with, he estimates twenty houses each and then a smaller subdivision.
Yeah, that probably won't-
That's how, that's how they, that's how they judge.
But, but I'm saying, Reggie, there's an approval process that could take six months.
Yeah, that won't-
I know, I know, but that's, we're communicating with both.
What we want is-
That won't affect that much.
Maybe year three or four, it would.
I asked, I asked-
But it's actually building permits we need to know.
But I asked Rich that question. He said it's about average. So, he says it's about twenty, twenty-five thousand.
But the question is, what the hell is average?
Well, I mean, it does, it's, we don't expect it to double the new growth.
Well, the other thing too is the new houses might be average, but I know a lot of people are doing additions and stuff like that. We should know. There's a dollar, and, and, and I know the assessors look for those building permits to establish a dollar rate for new growth. Just want to make sure they're not sitting there and not moving forward, that's all.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I can send you what he has sent us in his annual town report of the number of permits issued for calendar year. I can send you that.
Okay. That's something.
So, we got a handle on it.
And I mean, it's not gonna be inaccurate, but it's some number.
But we don't get the, what do they call it? The cherry sheet on the estimates of state revenue. We don't get that until July.
We don't have David Kilsom in there sniffing around here anymore.
But, you know, some of the revenues, I mean, I looked at recently that just came out. I, I think we're doing fairly good on some of them, more, better than we anticipated.
Is it an article in the paper or an email?
No, the revenue was done by Vicki.
That came through that we actually are doing better than expected quite a bit. I'm gonna call that number, so.
Now, I always like sitting at this end of the table. I can't hear what you're saying.
I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear. It was optimistic. We're doing much better.
Okay.
You don't want to share that with Mike.
Brickyard Road, I had another call, I called Bill Brady again. It looks like that's gonna get back on track, but not definite yet, so.
We're, we're writing what we've decided on. Wait and see.
Wait and see. Uh, highway superintendent's con-
What? Are you giving me new contract?
Yeah, job description. No, the posting to get rid of you.
I get it. Tell her the better.
Um, fire chief's been posted?
Yes.
And even, and where are the applications coming into here?
Into selectmen's.
And we haven't, when did they get posted?
It was posted on Tuesday or Wednesday. I don't recall. I'll, I'll get that.
Where was it posted?
Where was it posted?
It was posted at MMA, um, the Gazette, the Republican.
Okay.
And the two fire chief, there's two associations, it was posted.
Karen, Matt, June.
Yeah.
What was the salary posted as?
You had approved it to be sixty-five to seventy.
No, no responses yet.
Yes.
Does anybody have any other business that we need to talk about?
Did you say yes, we had responses? Oh, we did, good.
Oh, you did get responses? Oh, yeah, we got letters already?
You're right. You don't hear over there, do you?
I can't hear nothing.
No, I'm telling you. That's why we need to-
It's like dead air over here.
Exactly. We need that new-
So, I don't think it's dead air. I think you're sitting next to a dead ear.
Doodle. Sucks all the life right out of you.
The town administration process, where are we on that? Just so-
Um, Vicki's gonna be away and I talked to her about tentative date to look at that on the twenty-fifth.
So, is it Vicki and Dave, you and Jackie?
No. Well, Jackie, me, Donna, Dave and John Martin.
John Martin. And John Martin's away.
So, what do you want to talk to Vicki about?
He may mistake in the name.
Vicki put her name in to be on it, so.
We, we, we didn't have, we had-
We didn't do seven, we did five.
Right, so it was Don.
Don, did I say Vicki? Five years of it, it's, it's Don. Must be that calling.
And, and it's John Martin's away too, 'cause I tried to call him today.
So, it's, uh, we're gonna meet on the twenty-fifth. This is what tentative we are-
I think he's, the message on it is-
We'll, we'll form a chairman and then we'll do what the board wanted.
Did you open any?
No.
Oh, there's still, I was, I-
I, I didn't want to open anything until the whole board.
I, I remember the return addresses. It was all, like, all over New England, as I recall.
So, have we closed the, um, call for applications or not?
Yes, we closed it. Whatever day I dropped them off to Ed was the last.
So, we had eighteen?
Eighteen. I, I might be counting some references, but I counted all of them.
There are, there are five letters of reference that are attached to the line.
I mean, I-
So, there's eighteen actual applications.
I think we should say something about that, um, editorial in the Gazette.